Good evening and welcome to the July 11th meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Planning Commissioners serve a three-year term appointed by the City Council with a two-term limit. Final decisions are sometimes made by the Planning Commission as we have final decision-making authority on some items, while on other items, we are a recommending body and the City Council will make the final decision. We do have a quorum this evening and we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One final note is that some of our items at the Planning Commission are public hearings and the public is always welcome to testify here at City Hall to do that. Other items, we have our study items where we will not be holding a public hearing. So, we will begin then with our agenda and start with item number one, which is a special item for us this evening and it's the swearing-in of two new Planning Commissioners. So, I am going to ask Mr. Kevin Cunningham and Ms. Deanna White to step down to the podium, please. And Ms. White, we'll start with you and I'll ask you to please make sure you're speaking into the microphone so we can hear that on television at home. And I'll ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Deanna White.
I, Deanna White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the Planning Commission.
Of the office of the Planning Commission.
Of the city of Bloomington.
Of the city of Bloomington.
In the county of Hennepin.
In the county of Hennepin.
In the state of Minnesota.
In the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, Commissioner White.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Cunningham, I'll have you step forward now. I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kevin Cunningham.
I, Kevin Cunningham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the Planning Commission.
Of the office of the Planning Commission.
Of the city of Bloomington.
Of the city of Bloomington.
In the county of Hennepin.
In the county of Hennepin.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, Commissioner Cunningham.
Thanks.
For those watching at home, those are both three-year terms which will go through July 30th of 2027. We'll move then to item number two, which is at 8301 Stanley Road and the applicant is Stanley Terrace Apartments. And Ms. Hesbeck, you have the staff report for us.
Good evening. Give me one second. Okay, so this item is final site and building plan revisions to convert a shared space to one additional living unit at 8301 Stanley Road. So, I wanted to note that this item was approved by the Planning Commission in 2021, but the approval has expired, so the applicants are coming back to get approval to move forward with this project. So, this property is zoned R M 24 and it's guided as high-density residential. Surrounding the property, the zoning is R1 to the east and south, B4 to the west, and R M 24 to the north. The additional apartment will still keep this property within the allowable density range for R M 24 and there's no associated conditional use permit or anything that would require City Council review. So, for the building design, the applicant is proposing adding one studio apartment unit in place of the shared community space. And then they are also proposing a 224-square-foot office addition. With that, they will be adding one parking spot and five storage spaces. So, this shows the additional enclosed parking spot that they will be adding. They aren't actually required to add any parking because of the requirements for the community room. Those were nine spots, whereas for this office space and for the studio apartment, only 2.4 spaces are required. But it is required that they have one enclosed parking spot, so that's why we have this addition here. It is ADA compliant and it will lead to a ramp to access the elevator. And then down in the garage is where they will be adding the five additional storage spaces where only one is actually required. As far as code compliance goes, they have plenty of open space. Like I said, the storage space, they're adding five where they only need one. They meet the minimum unit size, parking is good, and the drive aisle is good. So, with that, staff is recommending approval. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Hesbeck. And for our new Commissioners, as I believe you know, we'll start with questions before we move on to discussion and so I'll open it up to the Commission now. Are there any questions for staff? I have a question, Ms. Hesbeck. Are any updates to landscaping or lighting required or does this not trigger that type of compliance?
Chairperson, I believe, since this is all inside, that it doesn't trigger that type of compliance.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, this is a public hearing, which I will open now and ask if there's anyone who would like to testify on this item. And we don't have anyone but staff here in... Oh, I'm sorry, we do have one person. Would you like to testify here? Very well. Is there anyone online, Mr. Markergard, that would like to testify?
Chart Cookton, no one online for this item.
Very good, then I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes and we'll now open to discussion. Commissioner Curry.
Looks pretty straightforward. I don't see anything that's not in compliance with code or no variances or anything, so it seems pretty simple.
Commissioner McGovern?
I mirror exactly what Dan has said. It's a pretty straightforward and very easy project.
I will add that this is so straightforward, it seems like something that I wish we could do administratively. And I went back and looked at the notes of when we saw this the last time and I think we had the same comments. I don't know what abilities we have to make these types of things administrative. Mr. Markergard, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, Chart Cookton. Recently, you reviewed some proposed streamlining changes, one of which would be to allow, what was it, up to five units additional to be approved at the staff level? Or under five units to be approved at the staff level? So, that is something that staff is proposing. We are meeting with the City Council in study session Monday night to discuss that and if they give us the thumbs up, we'll bring that back as an ordinance for a public hearing.
I think that's terrific. And I'll step forward in the right direction. Any other discussion or I will look for a motion?
So moved.
We'll get you the motion up on the screen there, Commissioner Cunningham, if you don't mind.
In case PL 2024-85, having been able to make the required findings, I move to approve final site and building plan revisions to convert shared space within an existing apartment building to one additional living unit at 8301 Stanley Road, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of this application. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 5-0 and this is a final decision by the Planning Commission unless an appeal is received by the City Council by 4:30 PM on July 16th. We will move then to item number three, which the applicant is the city of Bloomington for cannabis business standards and there's been a request for item continuance. Mr. Markergard, is there a public hearing we need to open or how do we handle that here?
Yes, Chart Cookton, what we would recommend is opening the public hearing and then continuing it. We're recommending to August 15th. A little background on that, we are drafting this ordinance right now. We had a staff departure in the City Clerk Division, which has kind of slowed down the process. So, we need a little more time to complete that. So, we think August 15th, we'll have that ready.
Very well. I will open the public hearing then and ask if there's anyone here who would like to testify. I'm not seeing anyone step forward and we will leave the public hearing open and I will look for a motion to continue this item to August 15th. Commissioner Curry.
I move to continue the item until August 15th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for continuance of this item number three to August 15th, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 6-0 as Commissioner Isa has joined us now and that will move then to August 15th Planning Commission meeting. Moving along then, we'll move to item number four, which is a study item for the Planning Commission regarding the 102nd Street. We're going to get a recap of what's been going on there and also a update on school zone speed limits. And Ms. Amy Morone is here to give us a staff report.
Good evening, Planning Commission. It's kind of an honor to be here on the night with the new members. So, just a little bit of information is that the Planning Commission is an advisory board on traffic and transportation-related items as well. So, you'll see us occasionally kind of bringing these types of updates and items to you. So, just as an introduction, you've heard about some of the speed limit changes that are coming to the roads in Bloomington. And there's been some discussion about 102nd Street as well in front of the schools. It seems like you've gotten a few questions or there's been some public comment and so we just wanted to make sure that you have good information about the background of what's been done on 102nd Street in the past and what we have planned in the future. This is just going to be an informational item. There's not going to be a requested action. So, I'm going to start out by giving an update on kind of the location, the history and background of this section of roadway. And then Kirk Roberts is going to come up and he'll give you a little bit more information specifically about the school zone speed limit project that's underway. So, this is the section of 102nd Street that we're talking about. It's between Normandale Boulevard and France Avenue and there's three schools along this section. So, there's a long background on 102nd Street. So, starting all the way back in 2006, we started our first study in anticipation of 2009 overlay on this roadway. And at that time, we had done some neighborhood engagement and gone through a process and did propose some striping changes to happen on this section. At the time, there was quite a bit of pushback and so as part of the outcome of the public hearing with the City Council, changes to convert this from a four-lane undivided to a three-lane were not approved at that time. We did look at it again as part of the Olson driveway study. So, we had identified some spot safety concerns at that driveway, a history of crashes. So, we looked at the corridor at that time a little bit as well, but we're really focused on mostly at the driveway. Then we did look at possible striping changes again in 2014. So, there's been a lot of attention given just in the studies in the past. Projects that have happened are, we did the rectangular rapid flashing beacon enhancement. One of the first, first of two that were installed in the city were at the Jefferson High School. Then we had a safe routes to school project that was called the Jefferson-Olsen Safe Routes to School Project in this area. It did pedestrian crossing enhancements at that Johnson Avenue and Jefferson driveway, the curb bump out and the RRFB enhancement. Enhancements at France Avenue and Heritage Hills with the overhead mast arm and the RRFB enhancement. Old Chalkaby Road and Cal is also a school crossing for the school area, so that was enhanced as well. We did a trail across from the back of Olson Middle School just to provide better access to the school from Johnson Avenue. And then bike racks were installed at all those schools. Just this last year, we did the driveway enhancement project at Olson driveway and that's been a very positive outcome in this area as well. And like I said, Kirk will talk about the school zone speed limit project that is underway that will go into effect this year at the school area. A little bit more information just about the traffic data on 102nd Street. It's a four-lane undivided collector street. Posted speed limit currently is 35. It's going to be down to 30 now with the new speed limit changes. The volumes are between 5,000 and about 7,000 vehicles per day. And currently, 85th percentile speeds are between 35 and 38 miles per hour. So, this, I know it's like a pretty small graphic. Just wanted to show you that, you know, when we do our traffic studies is when we really get into the details of the crash data that's available, but it is something that we do monitor. So, this represents 10 years of reported crash data and I'm not including the crashes in this graphic that are at France Avenue. At France Avenue, there were 31 incidents in the 10 years. At Normandale, there were 37 in the 10 years. Both of those are near or around what's called the 50th percentile Hennepin County value comparison. Let's see if I can get that word right. The average crash rate in Hennepin County is kind of what we compare it to. So, the France Avenue one is just a little bit above and the Normandale one is a little bit below. So, it's not like one of the highest, you know, these aren't triggering as the highest crash locations even though those numbers are high. There's a lot of volume going through those intersections. But nothing to ignore for sure. At Normandale, there, just at the cursory look of the crash reports, there were two that did indicate that they involved bicycles. At France Avenue, there's one that indicated it involved a pedestrian. So, then that leaves about 20 reported across this whole corridor that are represented by these colored dots here. I know at least two of them are associated to the wrong location just from reading through the reports. They reference 98th Street, but somehow their dot ended up here. 11 of them are associated with the school driveways. So, that's more than 50% of them. And then there's others along the corridor. Two incidents involved pedestrians. There was one just this in 2023 and that was not in a school crossing, but it was near the Jefferson High School driveway. So, the one that doesn't have the marked crosswalk is where that incident was. The other one was on Johnson Avenue. It's actually at the location where we have done the crosswalk enhancement. It happened right before we had done the crosswalk enhancement. So, we've now added the flashing beacons and the overhead lighting since then. And then there were also, in that 10 years, there was also one identified that involved a bicycle. And that one was at the stop-controlled leg of Johnson at 102nd Street. And what happened, according to the police report, is that the driver pulled up into the crosswalk area. They didn't strike the bicyclist, but the bicycle like ran into the side of the car. So, it was a very low-speed incident, but it was a reported bicycle incident. So, I just wanted to make sure that you have all of the actual, like, just a little bit of background and history on the reported incidents that are in this area. This is not a pretty slide to look at, but what staff's recommendation is right now and has been, and this is all based on a report that we gave to the City Council almost a year ago. So, we think that the next step for 102nd Street, besides the school zone speed limits, is that we have to do another study for this corridor to develop a plan. And it's not a quick, easy study because we really need to address the intersection of France Avenue and 102nd Street. So, that's a pretty large analysis just with that. We know that the circulation at Jefferson has huge impacts on 102nd Street. And so, the study will include what modifications could be done on their site that would help improve not only the flow on their site, but also the backups and the queuing that happens onto 102nd Street. We would like to address the intersection of Normandale and 102nd. We think that we've done a little bit of advanced work on that since we have a Normandale sidewalk and trail project coming up and we want to make sure that we've got that designed to the level that it will be. So, we don't have to move anything just a couple of years after we built that trail and sidewalk. Definitely, we will be looking at the proper link or what would be the right lane configuration on 102nd Street if a three-lane configuration would be right. And then also addressing all of the active transportation needs. So, on-road or off-road facilities, sidewalks, trails, crosswalks, making sure they're all at the right locations and addressing all the needs. The other part of our staff recommendation is that it is definitely time to do an update to our comprehensive Safe Routes to School Plan. So, these are just examples of sheets from our 2012 plan, 2012. So, that's like 12-year-old plan. The great news is we've constructed almost all the projects that were identified in the plan. The not great news is it's a 12-year-old plan now and it definitely, there's been a lot of changes on how the school sites are functioning. There are so many more parents that are picking up and dropping off. So, we need to go through and get a comprehensive update of our Safe Routes to School Plan. So, we're watching for funding opportunities. We think there's going to be an MINDOT Active Transportation Planning Assistance Solicitation this fall. We think there's also going to be Safe Routes to School Non-Infrastructure Solicitation. Last year, they only did it for Greater Minnesota. So, we were watching closely at that time, but they only offered it for Greater Minnesota. This time, it's anticipated to be in the metro area as well. We've already completed an application for Safe Streets and Roads for All. And one of the opportunities under that is that we could say, critical to us establishing a roadway safety action plan is having a current Safe Routes to School Plan. And so, we've applied for funding to do that update under that solicitation. We should find out in August if that's successful or not. But all of these studies take time and resources. So, these are high on our radar. They're just, we don't have, at this time, we just don't have the funding or the staff time. We'll make the staff time if we get the funding. All right, this is just kind of a breakdown of, got to do the study first and it'll take six to nine months. We would probably run it through a school year, but it could definitely get started before or after, but it's certainly going to have a lot of stakeholder groups, parents, PTAs, principals, everybody involved in that area. And then after we have a good solid plan, then we will start looking for funding to construct projects. So, not on 102nd Street, I just wanted to tell you some of the Safe Routes to School projects that we have coming up. So, this year, we're constructing the crosswalk enhancement on Old Chalkaby Road, 98th Street, in front of Kennedy High School at Second Avenue. Next year, we're constructing a new sidewalk for Valley View Middle School and Elementary School along the north side of 88th Street. And then some new sidewalk connecting Valley View Middle School to Portland and also some additional enhancements to that overhead RRFB that's currently there. And then in 2025 and 2026 is the Normandale Boulevard Sidewalk and Trail Project. And that affects, it's within the walking boundary of five schools, so we've got those listed there. We've gotten a little bit of funding to help boost that project with Safe Routes to School as well. All right. Any questions on this portion before Kirk gives us the update on the school zone speed limits?
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. What happened to the striping proposal from 2014?
Commissioner Curry, the City Council did not approve it based on the public hearing results.
Do we know why they didn't approve or what the results were or what the kind of feedback was there?
I mean, these were both long hearings and general consensus is that there was too, there's too much concentrated traffic volume at the school driveways. And it was still kind of early on in our four-to-three lane conversions. There was some doubt on whether it would be successful. And so, it was a, we don't want to introduce it in an area with student drivers if we don't know for sure that it's going to work. It will also require a construction of a right-turn bay, which requires right-of-way acquisition from at least one personal property. And so, that also played a big role in it.
Okay. You said that the road is in the 50th percentile of Hennepin County safety. Do you happen to know what the percentile is for school areas?
Commissioner Curry, that's a great question. They don't break it out that way. This is just like, in the county, it's based on roadway classification and volumes and it ranks like streets against like streets to try to figure out what is not an acceptable level, but just a comparison level. And so, I have not seen it broken down specifically for schools, but I'll do a little digging and see if I can find that.
Okay. Yeah, I just figure, I don't know, I just assume school areas are typically safer, right? I don't know. That's just my assumption. Sorry. And then I have one last question, which is just, was there any consideration done to doing a study before or any work done as part of the Jefferson Stadium proposal by the school district?
Can you clarify the question? Was there consideration given by the school district to do a traffic study or by city staff to try to do something in advance?
Or by city staff maybe recommending to the, I guess, I understand that the city and the school board are separate entities and operate separately, but I also figure that they have to work together in some way. So, I don't know if there typically would be a recommendation of some sort.
Kirk Roberts is here to discuss.
Commissioner Curry, appreciate the question. We did study traffic impacts associated with the stadiums. We did not formalize a study or use a consultant. You know, often we put that out to a consultant if it's a very large study or very controversial. We did not do that in this case, but we did look at impacts associated with that and how they affect the area in general. Most of what happens at the stadium happens outside of normal school hours. It happens in the evening when school is already out. And the stadiums can generate traffic that, it's not going to be what you would see even in an ordinary day at school. It will generate less traffic than that. So, the rush of traffic in and out in the morning and out in the afternoon, the stadiums won't generate that sort of volume. And they generate those volumes in the evening hours. And so, the impacts also occur when the roads... also occur when the roads are outside of the peak hours too. Most of the time when we're looking at traffic, we want to look at those morning and peak hours. That's when the, the roadway is under the most stress. That's when you expect the biggest issues. And so the stadiums operate outside of that. And so there's no new uh, significant capacity impacts or anything like that. To the question that you're probably asking though, is how are people going to get out and about on foot? Uh, and that is a question we ask because uh, and the, the good thing about where these stadiums sit is they're in an area which has been fairly well developed for pedestrians. Uh, for people on bike, people on, on foot and everything like that. So there's already a lot of infrastructure in place. And then if we see changes associated with the stadium, we have people walking where we didn't expect, or they weren't walking before, then we're developing those, the, the plans right now to address that, to address the events themselves. And those plans will have to be approved by the city engineer. So that's a long answer to a short question.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Risa?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so my question, similar to Commissioner Curry's question, but a bit different is when we're comparing that road in front of um uh, Jefferson, I believe he was one oh second. And there's a fifty percent crash rate according to Hennepin County data. I forgot the exact term you used, but is that, um, is there kind of a safe level of percent, in terms of percentage that staff or the county recommends to be at? Cause yeah, that's, that's my question. Cause fifty percent if it's in just school roads, that's different than like fifty percent of all roads. So I guess is there a percentage or quota that it should be at? That's a safe zone.
Um, Commissioner, you say, um, that okay, so it's, it is just a comparison number. So it is, there isn't a threshold or a trigger that says if it, if it reaches point seven five versus being close to this um, average crash rate, then that's when we have to do something. Really, we kind of use it as an index to say, oh, it looks like there's something different happening at this intersection that's that, that may be contributing other than the fact that it's just high volumes, or there's a lot of lanes of traffic going through here. So that's how we, how we use that as just a factor, just a comparison. So there really isn't a number that says once, once it's, you know, point six instead of point five. There, there's no magic number.
Okay, thank you. My final question is, um, is it, or?
Just to add one thing too, cause I don't want misunderstandings. When Ms. Marone speaks about the fiftieth percent, that's a percentile of um, comparison to other Hennepin County intersections. It's not to say that fifty percent of the people driving through there are having crashes. That would be very, very bad. It's just to say that when we compare this intersection with all the intersections in Hennepin County, it's about average in terms of its crash rate. Um, and the thing that we look for, those outliers, where is it very much above average? And those are the ones we target for those safety improvements and other things. So I just wanted to make that clarification. I apologize for the interruption.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, um, last question, is it broken down uh, to periods of the day? Or is it just overall each day? Is that average of fifty percent?
Oh, this is just a per million entering vehicles is what the crash rate is calculated based off of.
Thank you for that.
I have a question, Ms. Marone. Um, so did you say one of the proposals will be going to that three lane configuration again? We're gonna re-propose that?
Um, Chair Cookden, that would definitely be something that we think would be included in that study and go through the whole process.
Great. And another question, you mentioned the Normandale Trail. I've not heard this before. Can you explain high level what that project is?
Um, yes, I can. So um, currently you will see on Normandale Boulevard, north of ninety-fourth Street. Several years ago, there was reconstruction of that roadway. And trail was constructed on both sides of the road. Um, south of there from ninety-fourth Street, all the way down to Old Chocopee Road, there's still some very um, you can almost see a trail in some locations. So there's um, a bit, there's bituminous surface that is still used by bikes and pedestrians and is in pretty poor condition. And so um, our infrastructure group has been working for quite some, some time to um, get started on some plans. We're starting some right away acquisition. There's going to be a project to construct a ten-foot bituminous trail on the west side of Normandale Boulevard. And then on the east side will be a six-foot concrete sidewalk. And so there was a public engagement process a couple of years ago, and we will be beginning another, another round of public engagement to go along with this project. Still at a very early stage, however, we, we have started to secure some funding for it, and it is definitely programmed. I'm going to look back at city engineer, just to give a thumbs, okay.
We've got her a thumbs up.
Alright.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, Kirk Roberts, I believe you're next. Thank you, Ms. Marone.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, again Kirk Roberts, Traffic and Transportation Engineer. I appreciate your time tonight. Um, and as Mrs. Marone said, we are here from time to time to seek advice and uh, from the Planning Commission on transfer, on traffic and transportation issues. I appreciate your time on that, and we will try to make it as painless as possible. So I'm here to talk to you about the school zone speed limit updates. This kind of dovetails with the work that Amy Marone was talking about. So as many of you recall, the Planning Commission uh, recommended code changes to allow staff to uh, change speed limits as well as set school zone speed limits. The council acted on that on May twentieth. That in, uh, and um, made that uh, change in the city code. There was um, on behalf of the Planning Commission and the City Council, there's a lot of interest in getting a hundred and second street and implementing those school zone speed limits. There are other similar schools situated in the city that are adjacent to four-lane roadways like this. And I, the goal uh, of staff right now is to bring all three of those areas um, and add school zone speed limits here by the start of the school year. Uh, West eighty-fourth Street, that's Normandale to France, similarly configured, a hundred and second street, and then West one hundred and sixth street near Oak Grove. This is um, between Humboldt and thirty-five W. So I'm going to talk about where we're at with those. Um, and just for your information, here's roughly where they're located. The, the primary document that we're using is MINDOT has developed uh, a school zone, a guide for establishing school zone speed limits. This is significant in a couple of ways. One, it's a really good document. The state did a great job. They drew on local experience as well as national research and experience in developing school zone speed limits. Um, the other thing is in each state of the fifty states, the state themselves are considered the traffic experts. Um, they are the ones we have to look to to traffic and transportation. And most of what we do has to be in substantial conformance with them. That's the way that we minimize, we improve safety the most, and we minimize risk to the public and to the city. And so I've included a link there. If you want to add this to your summer reading list, it's, it's available. Um, let's see here. A couple of basics that I'll run through. Based on research, again, that guide, if you can get less than or equal to about ten miles an hour speed differential, this is to say your school zone speed limit should be within about ten miles an hour of your regular speed limit. That's going to be the most effective. That's going to see the most compliance with drivers. As you know, we talked about changing speed limits on our larger roads adjacent to schools. Those will all be at thirty miles an hour. Um, here in the next about two weeks, three weeks. And so we've set the school zone speed limits at twenty miles an hour. So we're within that ten mile an hour speed limit. Local roads will also be going to twenty-five miles an hour. This will be unposted. It'll be a citywide ordinance. That's going to also take place in the next few weeks to a month. Um, and so we're looking at a five mile an hour differential. So we meet that criteria where that, that ten miles an hour sweet spot that we want for the most effective speed limit in our school or most effective compliance. Um, you want the speed zone centered about where people are crossing. Um, that's going to be the end and start of those are subject to some judgment. So if we can include a school driveway and slow people down at those driveways, that's going to provide some benefit to the public as well. Um, and the length of the zone is important. People um, optimize for time. Um, and so we want them to slow down, be cautious, protect our students, and then get on their way. And if we make these zones too long, they start to lose effectiveness. And that, that loss of effectiveness is, is substantial. And when I talk about effectiveness, most of what we do in traffic, we want it to be self-reinforcing. We want it to be very apparent. Uh, and so if we have an area, you know, one of the first things that we get is the police need to go out there and write tickets and, and the police go out there and write tickets. Um, that's not always ideal. No one likes to get a ticket. These are ordinary, good people, um, observant of the laws. And if we can make something that is very apparent to them, and it seems like it should be the case, people will comply. The people are pretty good about that kind of thing. And so we're always looking to make sure that, that what we're doing makes sense to people. So in terms of signage, the larger four-lane undivided roadways that we talked about, what we are intending to use, we've got a lot of options, but on those roadways with the complexity, um, we feel like it's best to use the flashing. So these will be the school zone speed limit twenty miles an hour when those beacons are flashing. Um, that equipment has moved along quite nicely in terms of technology. We can program the entire year. We can program several years ahead. So we can talk to the school, find out what their yearly calendar is. We program that ahead. And that all works automatically without staff having to do much there. On the smaller roads, these are local roads adjacent to schools. We want to implement that school zone. Uh, and we want a message that's simple and effective. And so what we've decided to start with is it'll be schools twenty miles an hour, seven thirty to four thirty, Monday through Friday. We have the option to do months here. And if there were a parking restriction where people have time to look at that and think about the implications of that, we've done that, and we do have that around some of our schools. But this is speed limit. This is something that we want people to be able to perceive when it's active and needed as they're driving by. So we're going to leave that off for now. It'll just be seven thirty to four thirty, Monday through Friday. All during that time period, it'll be twenty miles an hour on these local streets. So applying this, first off, Poplar Ridge Elementary uh, along eighty-fourth Street. Um, and I won't go into details on all of these. Um, but that, if we apply those principles, we come out um, with a speed limit zone on eighty-fourth Street about five hundred and fifty feet. It's centered on the crosswalk. And if you've driven through the area, you know that there's a nice crosswalk there. It's a red, yellow, green signal, which we don't use anymore, but that one is still useful and still effective. The kids can press the button. And they get across the street there at that signal. The, some of the other issues we're thinking about whenever we do a change like this is uh, one unique feature about eighty-fourth Street is there's stop signs at Quinn and Morris, either side of these. It's tempting to maybe expand that out. Well, let's include the stop signs. People will be going slow. They'll be more inclined to stop. The trouble with that idea is that drivers can only take in and process and deal with so much information. And you have to think about what you want them to do the most and make that the primary source of information. Approaching these stop signs, we want drivers to stop. We don't want them distracted by other messages or confused because drivers can only process so much. And so we've kept the zone within those. And so that's just an example of where we've got to apply that engineering judgment to the start and end of these zones. And then Palmer Avenue, we end up, uh, and this is again a twenty-five mile an hour local street. Then we end up with a nine hundred foot zone uh, where people are going to have to observe those, that speed limit during those hours. And the reason is along that street is, is there's no specific crossing locations. Drivers can expect kids anywhere along that street. And I hope they, you know, are walking down the sidewalk and crossing at a good safe location, but I think it's fair to expect that school activities can occur anywhere along there. There's doors adjacent to that road. Um, and so I think it's effective to have it all through there. And there's some open questions about as we, as you move to the east. If there's a need for some speed limits there on Morris Avenue. Um, there could be a potential crossing, and if we coordinate these with the schools, uh, we'll figure those issues out. And my PowerPoint is not working now. Next up, Oak Grove Elementary. This is a hundred and sixth street uh, as it intersects thirty-five W. Uh, again, we end up with a school zone there centered on the crosswalk, right at the crest of the hill there, extending down past the main driveway to, to Oak Grove. Uh, that serves the middle school. There's also Oak Grove Elementary that is directly adjacent to a hundred and fourth street, uh, well-used crossing in that area. And the school zone is roughly centered on that. Um, another interesting thing about this one is Humboldt Avenue. There's some crosswalks there. We don't know of any significant school zone activity there. And so that's going to be an open question. If we find evidence, if in our studies or if when we're coordinating these with the school district, if we find information that tells us there are kids actively crossing there, using that, then we'll uh, implement a school zone there. Another question we have is the signal at a hundred and six, and that's going to be relevant here as I talk. So I'll just keep going. Um, but that's how the old growth facility looks. And back to a hundred and second street, which Amy Roan talked about. This is how our school zones are going to translate there. We'll have a long school zone there in front of Olson Elementary centered on that signal, again, where the kids cross. Um, that'll drop out for a while. And then we'll pick up the school zone again as you approach Jefferson High School at the main crossing that was discussed in Amy's presentation. There will also be a school zone on Johnson Avenue directly between the two facilities. And that'll be that local street. Um, so that's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on there. So we'll just use the static signs for that as opposed to the flashing beacons, which will be deployed on a hundred and second street. Couple of things that we've still got to work out. France Avenue, it's a busy road through there. It's forty miles an hour. There's a nice crossing at Heritage Hills Drive. Um, there is also just south of that, a set of railroad tracks and the crossing beacons there. So we've got some work to do here. It's a county road, and it's got significant other things that drivers have to pay attention to. Approaching the traffic light at France Avenue, at the intersection that Amy talked about, that Hennepin County owned and operated. Um, we need to explore how we can, or if it's feasible or sensible to extend the school zones across those intersections like that. Again, the primary thing we want people to do to signal is pay attention to the signal and drive accordingly. So if we implement school zones with flashing beacons, is that going to take away from that? And so we're going to seek some help with that, as well as a partnership with the county and see what's possible there. So that's work that's outstanding. But right now, we're going to implement the school zone on a hundred and second as well as Johnson Avenue, and we'll pick off those other issues as we learn more and have time to address them. That's relevant because the next school that we need to get in the queue is Kennedy over on um, Old Chocopee Road and Nicolet Avenue. And we have all those issues there. There's a signal that's actively used. And there's beacons on Nicolet Avenue where kids cross, and there's hundreds of kids crossing there. There's also a signal that was talked about that we're adding on Old Chocopee Road there at that high school too. And so how can we add school zones? And does it make sense to add school zones here to reduce that speed in light of these other things? And so again, we're going to uh, seek some outside help and seek some partnership with the county to see where we, how we can roll that out here in a way that's going to be effective and actually protect the public safety. Next steps, the equipment's on order. The request for bids to help us with the work is complete. We're working through coordination with the school staff. We've been coordinating with our police department, including some training for them and helping them understand what we're doing and why, and how they can enforce that. And then we're doing information and outreach. Our plan is to get these in place by the start of the school year, but there's some things that we don't control. The equipment is specialized. It's, it's not just something off the shelf. It has to be built as well as uh, the installation. And so we are targeting these for the start of the school year with the hope that we'll have them in place, but they could be um, a few weeks uh, beyond that, but uh, we'll have them in place as soon as possible. And then we start picking off the other schools in the city, so. Commissioners, that's what I have. I appreciate thoughts, feedback and conversation on this.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Questions? Ms. Risa?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Is Old Chocopee a county road, road or city road?
Commissioner Esa, that is a county road.
Okay. And at what point does it transition from ninety-eighth?
Yeah, good question. So right here at the railroad tracks, uh, it departs, so Old Chocopee- So Old Shakopee off to the west, as you come up to the railroad tracks, is Hennepin County, 98th Street, just outside of City Hall, the city, and then it turns to county just after the railroad tracks as you head off to the east here.
Also right in front of us, okay.
Yeah, pretty much right nearby.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Cunningham.
It sounds like this equipment's ordered, so this question's more for clarity. The flashing lights with the signs for the four-lane roads, are those always on during the hours that they've been programmed for school? Or are they just on when they detect a vehicle or select hours during the day?
Yeah, Commissioner Cunningham, they are on during the programmed hours that we tell them to, and that will be when, so if we have school in session, say 7:30, I'm not sure if that's true, but 7:30, we'll add, you know, a half an hour or so before that, 45 minutes before that, and then once school is in session, another half an hour after that, and the beacon will shut off automatically. And they're solar-operated, too, at this point, so.
Thank you. And particularly for the static signs where you showed, okay, 7:30 to 4:30, is that coordinated with the school based on their, their hours of operations, or?
It is correct.
Okay. Do those change very often, or are we okay there?
I'm going to defer to Amy Marone on that question.
Chair Cookden, so there's a lot of different start and stop times throughout the district. This, that range of time was specifically selected to encompass all of the ranges. So I think there's like four different scenarios of start and stop time, just to take best advantage of their busing.
Mr. Roberts, when the school zone is ending, what is that signage? Is it just going back to the other speed limit, or does it say, end school, or?
That's correct. The, at the end of the school zone, whether it's the beacons or just the static signs, it'll say, end school speed zone, and then it'll affirm the existing speed limit. So on 102nd, that'll have a 30 mile an hour sign just below that one. And then on the local streets, it'll just say 25 miles an hour by ordinance.
Is there any consideration to keep these on during the summer if a school has summer programming and that type of thing?
That is a good question. We can do that, and we will coordinate that work with the school district. A lot of these facilities are used throughout the summer. Summer school is a, is certainly was a thing for me. I spent a lot of my summers there, but, but they have activities and programs throughout the year, and we'll coordinate with them and program accordingly.
Very good. Other questions? Commissioner? I'm sorry, Commissioner Curry, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I suppose on the same thread, I mean, could it be done where it just says, and maybe I missed it, where just children are present, that the speed limit is enforced, or?
Commissioner Curry, those signs are a possibility, 20 miles an hour when children present. They're not well-loved, they're not loved by police, it makes it challenging sometimes when you issue a ticket. And I don't think they're always very clear. If, if a child is present this summer, for instance, is that, you know, are they just, is that a school zone issue? So it is a possibility, and I can see some uses for them in the city. I'm hoping to not use them much. I just don't think they're a terribly effective sign.
Okay. Yeah, I just figured maybe with the football stadium, that might be helpful as well. You know, and I guess just an observation, and in total respect, and really appreciate everything it is that you guys all do, but when I read something like, you know, the segment is frequently brought up as an area of concern by residents, and then, like, with the Jefferson Football Stadium, it's recommended by staff to pass this, and we've got like a 50th percentile safety rating for a school area, I just don't, those, those things seem to conflict with me. So I just, I don't know, I just don't understand it. So, I don't know, just an observation.
Commissioner McGovern?
I do have a question for 102nd, and as much as I drive down 102nd, and I do have a tendency to speed, is there any indicator for when these signs go up, that it will indicate the speed and flash that you're going above the 20 mile an hour?
Commissioner McGovern, we do have signs that do that. We have some that are static that we've set in one location, we have others that are mobile that we deploy around the city. That's certainly a possibility. I'm not sure if we're going to use them here in a school area. Again, just because I don't want to overload drivers. If we can find a benefit for using those feedback signs like you're talking about, we'll do so. But always the risk is that we are overloading with drivers, and they're looking at that sign and wondering about their speed, and they miss that young person crossing and things like that. So we'll certainly use those, as they're applicable. We'll use them very cautiously in the school areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Roberts, and thank you, Ms. Marone. That concludes item number four, which was just for the Planning Commission, that will not be going to City Council. Item number five, then, is the consideration of draft Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 6th and June 20th of 2024. What we'll do here is that some, we have some new planning commissioners that were not present at those meetings. There will be a motion made in a second. I will call for those in favor, those not in favor, and then abstination. So if you were not there, you can vote in favor of abstination. Okay, I will look then for a motion or any comments on June 6th of 2024.
Motion to consider approval of draft Planning Commission meeting from 6, June 6, 2024, and June 20, 2024.
We'll start with, we'll do them one at a time, if that's okay. So June 6th is a, okay, so a second?
Second.
Okay, that's a motion of approval for June 6, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's four in favor and two abstinations. We'll move on then to June 20th. Commissioner McGovern?
I make a motion to approve the draft of Planning Commission meeting synopsis from June 20, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve June 20th of 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
That's four in favor and two abstinations. Okay, then, we will move on to item number six, which is our Planning Commission Policy and Issues Update. And for our new commissioners, this is an item we have at, at the end of every meeting. It's an opportunity for Mr. Markergard to tell us what's coming up and any other general items of interest to the Planning Commission. It's also an opportunity, then, for planning commissioners to bring up any items that were not on this evening's agenda. So we'll start then with Mr. Markergard.
Yes. Chair Cookden, Commissioners, our next meeting is in two weeks, July 25th. On that agenda, we only have one item, which is a conditional use permit for a cricket sports facility in a warehouse building that's at 10701 Hampshire Avenue South. And then, next meeting after that is in five weeks, and that's August 15th. That will be our annual organizational meeting as well. We have several items on the agenda, including the South Town applications, which include a preliminary development plan for a two-phase development, final development plan for 120,000 square foot retail building, and a preliminary plat. Then we have another public hearing for the Code Amendment, the cannabis business standards that were continued from this evening. We have a study item on short-term rental standards. And then, as part of our annual organizational meeting, we have the annual review of the Planning Commission rules of procedure, and then finally, the election of officers. So that's what we have in upcoming meetings.
Very good. Are there any items the Planning Commission would like to address this evening? Seeing none, that concludes this July 11th meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Good night.